Care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Emergency medical services has grown to fill gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care. The emergency medical services systems consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whether career or volunteer, they engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors recognizes the week of May 21 through 27 of 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Sutter County. We thank all emergency service -- excuse me. We thank all emergency medical services workers for their never-ending drive to help others. You're the heroes in our community, and we want to thank you and let you know how much we appreciate you. Good. Alex, what are you doing coming down here?
You've got more weight than I do, man. Come on up.
But you know your staff, you know that.
Well, I'd like to tell or say thank you to the Sutter County Supervisors for acknowledging EMS Week, and this is just a small portion of our staff. We're at about 120 total staff members. That's not just EMTs and paramedics, but also dispatchers and support staff and billers and office staff. Last year alone, we did just over 27,000 calls for service. We did over 550,000 miles driven on all of our vehicles. And there's a lot of hard work. It's not your regular Monday, nine to five. This is nights, weekends, holidays. We celebrate Christmas on different days, birthdays on different days, to make the sacrifice. And I just am greatly appreciative that we can honor everybody and their commitment to By County Ambulance and to our community.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
I want to thank your company and your men and women for how much you do for the community besides healthcare. All right? I don't think I've ever been to some sort of fundraiser for veterans or children and have some sort of By County presence not there. It's incredible. You know, when we have these 110, 115-degree days and we have these fires in the buttes, which hopefully we don't have any this year, they're there with their trailer. Now, we didn't have that four or five years ago. All right? We'd have firefighters sitting there, wore out, and now they bring in a cooling station where these guys can go in and get cooled down, relax, where they go back in. And that alone saves lives. All right? It's the thinking outside the box that you all do. It's for one of us supervisors to be able to call you up at any given time and say, hey, we need some at this station, we need some sort of emergency services, you'll have someone there. And that's incredible. That's first-class service. So, thank you, each and every one of you, each and every one of you for what you guys do for the Sutter area. Thank you.
It's Uba City Unified School District Bus Yard, where they do all the maintenance and keep the buses at night. They had a problem with their well water several years ago. It's probably five years or more. And what's shown up in there is trichloro propane. TCP is kind of the shortened abbreviation of it. And that can come from different solvents, degreasers, things like that, which you might expect a bus yard would use when they're maintaining vehicles. But it also can come from fumigants that are used on the soil for orchards and other farm use. It -- the products that were in use were since the 1940s, and I guess they, in the late 1990s, they discontinued new use because they found that this was a problem. It was getting in the soil, and it doesn't degrade. It works its way right down to the groundwater. So, I live on Reed Road, the next street over just south of them, and the groundwater flows south. So, when they tested our well, we have a concentration of it as well. So, I guess what I just want you to know is that this subject is out there. For four and a half years, they have been working, I guess it's the Water Board has been doing studies out there, trying to determine what the real source is of the TCP. I guess they've done a ton of studies, they've come to a conclusion, and they, because of the wells they drilled and stuff, the test wells, they've determined, it sounds like, that they don't think the bus yard is the contributor of it. But yet their -- let's see, their northwest well, the one, only that one test well, it's still showing concentrations of TCP. So that means that if it's not the bus yard that's contributing, then it would be some other property that might be northwest of their yard, and it's all flowing south toward everyone down below us. So, I think that's basically what he wanted me to do, give you an idea about it. And there is a public period for public notice, public comment on this, and it ends on the 31st of this month. So that's why I wanted to give Matt a copy. I'm sending a copy to the Water Board. I haven't seen any publicity on this in PL. We haven't, in fact, we haven't heard anything in four years. So, yes.
No, sorry, your time was up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I've never done this before, so please, thank you for this and your time.
No worries. Thank you. All right, next speaker is Raquel Wright. What's up? Sure.
There are actually three of us. We're Assemblywomen and Senators for the new state of California, and I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie Russignot.
So, we have three separate speaker cards, and we allow three minutes here per speaker. You can't give your time to somebody else, so is that all you have to say?
Okay, then I'll start. My background is I spent 28 years in the United States Army Nurse Corps, served in Vietnam, Desert Storm. We -- it's a pleasure to be here with this Board of Supervisors, and I've had the pleasure to meet Steve Smith. But we are talking about the electronic voting machines. And I am a county resident, representative of state of New California. We the People Movement for the Preservation of the Republic guaranteed to citizens by the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4. By this letter, I am notifying all county Board of Supervisors today that they must first and foremost prioritize protecting our national security during any future elections. It is imperative that we comply with implementation of security measures to protect the sovereign right of each eligible citizen to have authentic outcome when casting a vote in our elections. The Department of Defense has determined electronic machines are unlawful. Back in 2017, the United States Secretary of Homeland Security issued a statement clearly designating elections, infrastructure as critical infrastructure, for the obvious reason that elections have a major impact on national security. It's vital that the state of California complies with that inherent intent from the federal government and works to ensure a system of cybersecurity and oversight is established within every political subdivision. Every component of the election systems used in our county must have safeguards in place to prevent any attacks which threaten our national security. Secure elections are the protected right for every eligible citizen, and it is incumbent on our representatives to exercise their authority to see that no electronic voting system in the county is used as the primary method for counting, tabulating, or verifying federal.
50 U.S.C. 1701 to deal with the unusual and extraordinary threat to national security. Foreign policy and economy of the United States constituted by the increasing prevalence and severity of malicious cyber-enabled activities originating from or directed by persons located in whole or substantial part outside of the United States. These significant malicious cyber-enabled activities continue to pose an unusual and extraordinary threat to national security. Therefore, in accordance with Section 202D of the National Emergencies Act 50 U.S.C. 162022D, President Biden continued the national emergency for one year beyond April 23, 2023 with Executive Order 13694. I call upon each board member to act on behalf of the safety and welfare of your citizenry as the representatives who by oath of office stated you made that obligation freely. Your position requires that you heed the concerns of malicious cyber-enabled activities and recognize the immediate need for security by eliminating the use of voting machines for our elections starting with the upcoming federal election in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card is Stephanie Russignot.
Okay, hi. Okay, hi. I'm Steph, and I'm a resident for many years of Sutter County. And if I tell you how many years I've been here, you know I'm lying on my age, so I will not do that. Instead, I will say I have many years of -- about three decades' experience when I was an election inspector, and I've seen all kinds of problems with it. Many of them were fixed. But the bottom line, this is so egregious, the voting machines, what it has done to us, that as citizens, we the people, need to rise up and say, uh-uh. That's a cornerstone. One person, one vote, for whoever we choose, in secrecy. And if you want to campaign to let people know who you support, that's your right. I served in the United States Army for that right and that privilege. The woman that you just heard from, that little tiny blonde, she got a Bronze Star in Vietnam, and she did another war, too. She's a retired Army Nurse Corps Colonel. That's what it's about, our right to vote. We now know that Dominion is bad news. We have the proof, we have the evidence, we've got what they're doing in Arizona right now, and I beg you, go back. One person, one vote, one eligible person, one vote, and protect that with your life. I'd be glad to protect that with my life. I've already done it, and my oath never expired. Same with the Marine. That's what we're here for, is the Constitution. I would also like to -- I can stop shaking -- tell you that if we lose our elections, we lose it all. Remember back in the olden days, and I'm thinking some of you do, when they were first talking about the machines and the hanging Chad with Al Gore? Went down to the Secretary of State, and they presented all the machines on front. Every one of them were supposed to check them out, open to public. Well, guess what? They were not given source codes, and they had to sign a memorandum of understanding of nondisclosure, that you're not to open your mouth for whatever wrong you find of it. How fair is that? Here we are, 20 years later. Oh, yeah, that's right, we can flip any election. Nobody's elected, they're selected in advance. Maybe some local that's not so important, you know, like a counselor's ward or whatever. But the bottom line is, is we want freedom, we want fairness. And, like I said, I know many of you are patriots, and you would join me. If you don't give us fair election, we're going to unite up and let you know it's we the people, not them the tyrants. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. No further, there's no other speaker cards. We're going to move on to Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or for which prior policy direction has been given to staff and that require only routine action by the Board. The Chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total by one motion. However, the Board may, at its option or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately.
Move to approve 1323.
Second.
It moved in second. All in favor? Do we need a roll call? Is there any roll call, please?
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. If you -- please come back down for a presentation. We have a presentation for Law Day. If Doug Tibbetts and Fritz -- can you all, okay, please join us down at the front here?
Mr. Douglas Tibbetts will be representing the Uba Sutter Bar Association for the presentation.
I asked. Good afternoon.
President Dwight D. Eisenhower proclaimed Law Day to honor the role of law in the creation of the United States of America, and in 1961, Congress issued a joint resolution declaring May 1 as Law Day. As times throughout our nation's history, there have been divisions in society aggravated by incivility in public discourse and insufficient understanding about the Constitution and the way American government works. Even the founding generation overcame deep divisions to craft our great Charter of Government. All Americans must remember, as President Abraham Lincoln proclaimed, "We are not enemies, but friends." Through passion, may have strained, it must not break our bonds of affection. Members of the legal profession should lead the way in promoting collaboration to overcome differences and resolve disputes so that we may strengthen the bonds of affection between citizens and ensure all Americans understand how our constitutional order protects the blessings of liberty. Creating a more perfect union requires an educated citizenry that understands the rule of law and demonstrates engaged citizenship. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors recognizes May 1, 2023, as the Law Day in Sutter County. The theme for Law Day this year is Cornerstones of Democracy: Civics, Civility, and Collaboration. We encourage everyone to work together to overcome differences, resolve disputes, and preserve our democracy and republic.
Thank you. I'm here as a stand-in for all the attorneys in Sutter County. I actually started as an attorney in Yolo County a long time ago, and I've been a public defender here for almost 40 years. Nothing works as good as it used to, I'll tell you that. But thank you for the proclamation and the honor, and I pass it on to all my fellow attorneys. Thank you.
I over -- I moved Tony Farley's public comment card out of the way to accommodate you all. So, Tony, the stage is all yours.
Hello, I'm Tony Farley from South Sutter County, South Uba City here. I thank the Marine Corps for its service. Thank you, Zach Henry-Hamble, the Law Day, thank you, lawyers, thank you, the first responders, the paramedics, the military veterans. Thank you. Hope you have a good election in 2024. Thank you to Sarah, thank you to engineers, broadcaster, thank you to Elizabeth Montez, thank you to Sherri Barnes, thank you, everybody, thank you, Deborah. I appreciate it. Don't forget, I serve here for the Sutter Hall, my oath nurse buyer, I took oath for the county volunteer. Government officials, I claim law enforcement, oath nurse buyer, firefighter, oath nurse buyer, military nurse buyer, your oath's there forever. Lawyers take oaths, the bar and the Constitution. Lawyer oath, first bar oath, military oath, and they're inspired. So, thank you very much for your service.
All right, thank you. Appearance item is number 24.
Adoption of a resolution authorizing the installation of stop signs at the intersection of Keys Road and the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. An introduction of an ordinance setting a 40 mile per hour speed limit on Keys Road. Waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and continue the item to the meeting of June 13, 2023 for adoption.
Good afternoon, and Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Scott Riddle. I'm with Sutter County Development Services, I'm a senior civil engineer. So this is a project that started, the Keys Road Rail Crossing Project. It was initiated by the California Public Utilities Commission and is being funded by the Caltrans Highway Rail Grade Crossing Safety Program. And Sutter County and UPR have been contracted to provide design and construction of the rail crossing improvements as identified by the CPUC. So, Sutter County has completed the 30% design plans on -- for the project. In reviewing those plans with the Caltrans and the CPUC and the railroad, it was brought to our attention that, since it's currently a passive crossing, and it's going to be converted to an active crossing, we have a yield sign at that crossing currently. UPR has a policy that requires us to install a stop sign at the crossing until such time as an active crossing can be designed and constructed. So, we're proposing to install a stop sign at this point for that. In doing that, we did an engineering and traffic study and determined that the 85th percentile's speed was 40 miles per hour for that roadway. So, along with that, in looking at the design, we'd recommend that we lower the speed limit down to 40 miles per hour to help with the vertical curves in the grade crossing design to make everything work. So that's where we're asking to do ordinance for the speed limit to drop it to 40 miles per hour.
All right, seeing no speaker cards, are there any questions from the Board?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Flores. An ordinance of the County of Sutter amending the Sutter County Ordinance Code by adding to Section 1100-100 relating to the prima facie speed limits.
All right, thank you. Item 25.
Approval of a letter of agreement to change the terms and conditions of employment related to the addition of K-9 handlers with the Sutter County Deputy Sheriff's Association.
I'm Veronica Baumgartner, the interim HR Director. I am here before you today to present a side letter of agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association for -- to add language for a K-9 handler and how they would essentially be paid. So, in 2023, the Sheriff's Department and the county jail budget had included the addition of a K-9 to implement a K-9 program within the jail. The K-9 program in the county allows for things such as narcotic searches, cell extractions, officer protection, and reduced use of force and riot control. The jail K-9 Bailey, who I was hoping they would bring, come on, guys, was placed in service on April 10 within the jail. And we do have a corrections classification employee, so correctional officer, that is handling the dog and providing normal care, feeding, grooming, and training, and living with the K-9 handler. The impact to the general fund for '22, '23, so the remainder of this year, is $1,141.44 and budgeted for '23, '24, and these are general fund, I'm sorry, is $5,136. So, asking for approval for the side letter to include that language.
All right, seeing no speaker cards, any questions from the Board?
The Chair.
Yes, we advise forward.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 26.
Thank you.
Our Honorable County Administrative Officer, Steve Smith.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Just wanted to mention that our next meeting on June 13 will be the presentation of the recommended budget, and then on June 20, the budget hearings will commence. No other updates. Thank you.
All right. All right, there's correspondence, there's been applications coming in. Do you have that filed?
Yes.
All right, I guess we'll move down to the district reports. Supervisor Conant, do you have something to report?
Yeah, I'll start off. So, all I have is, this weekend will be the Real Day Weekend, and I wish everybody to have a good weekend, safe weekend. And if you have time, if you've ever gone to Calvary Temples, Grateful Nation, it's something to be seen and viewed and remember why we have this weekend. And I'd encourage you to go. I don't know what the times are on Monday, but I'm sure they have it on our website, but I know Sunday is at 10 a.m.
Yes, the Speaker.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item 26.
Thank you.
Our honorable County Administrative Officer, Steve Smith.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Just wanted to mention that our next meeting on June 13th will be the presentation of the recommended budget, and then on June 20th, the budget hearings will commence. No other updates. Thank you.
All right. All right, there's correspondence, there's been applications coming in, you have that filed?
Yes.
All right, I guess we'll move down to the district reports. Supervisor Conant, you have something to report?
Yeah, I'll start off. So all I have is, this weekend will be Memorial Day weekend, and I wish everybody to have a good weekend, safe weekend. And if you have time, if you've ever gone to Calvary Temples, Grateful Nations, it's something to be seen and viewed and remember why we have this weekend. And I'd encourage you to go. I don't know what the times are on Monday, but I'm sure they have it on our website, but I know Sunday is at 10:00 a.m. So maybe you can go and view it. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Few positives here. Sutter Baseball is playing for the section championship tonight, so good luck to them. I'd like to send, if they win that championship, love to send them a congratulatory certificate and to send them, I think I said something to on a section runner-up championship. I believe East Nick won the section championship in softball. I know East Nick and Sutter played as a president. It was a really cool event. Supervisor Conant did his lemon drops, and Floor's always been a big contributor with his sailing trip, and Supervisor Baines was there. We had a great time. He was the good luck charm at his table. Everyone kept on winning at his table, except for him. He didn't win anything, but everyone at the table kept on winning. So, but it was fun.
I can add, it was a wonderful event. I didn't win anything, neither my wife, really, but she invited her niece and nephew who cleaned the clock.
Oh, they won, I think we pulled their name for the last save.
Yeah.
And yeah, it was great. And I'd like to close in memory of Consuela Ween, who was the longtime manager at Country Floors forever, passed away a few weeks ago. And that's it for me.
Supervisor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Conant, I just want to remind you, you were the big winner at the Fireman's Dinner, though, so, you know, you took away a lot of loot from that one. I think Supervisor Baines and I didn't walk away with much out of there, but
Coffee cups.
Anyway, just a follow-up, in the second district, we got a lot of cool stuff going on. She left, but Sandy Drown was here. They're about to expand the Happy Vikings, so anyone who wants to check that out, go to Pluma Street. I think it happens next week, but I was going to have her verify that. But we get down there to Happy Viking for that expansion. The Holiday Inn Express is just a couple few days away from opening up, so there'll be a grand opening there at the Holiday Inn Express, right in the heart of Sutter County. And then also, I just want to invite everybody to attend the Farmer's Market. It's every Saturday, and now every Thursday night, so there's music, and it's a great time just to walk around on Pluma Street and enjoy your time. I'd like to ask, too, that we give some recognition to Sopa Svedrav or Sopa Thai. So recognition of her 20th year anniversary at Sopa Thai on Pluma Street in the heart of Sutter County. And then I'd like to also offer condolences for a very important member of our community, Brian Shul. He was a Vietnam War-era attack pilot and a major in the United States Air Force. He flew 212 combat missions and was shot down near the end of the war. He was so badly burned that he was given a next-to-no-chance-to-live. He underwent 15 major operations and months of physical therapy and eventually passed a flight physical and returned to active flying duty. He ultimately became one of the few to ever pilot the SR-71 Blackbird, and he was stationed at Beale Air Force Base. In 1990, Major Shul completed a 20-year career in the Air Force, logging 5,000 hours in fighter jets. He wrote four books on aviation. He became a popular motivational speaker. I want to mention, that's where I actually met him about 15 years ago, was it Rocky? When he spoke to Sutter Health, I think you were present then, so. And then he became a popular motivational speaker. He ran a photo studio in Marysville until his death in Reno, Nevada on Saturday, where he suffered a heart attack after giving a keynote speech to the Nevada Military Support Alliance event. What a great man, and he's going to be highly missed by this community and many others surrounding. So like a letter of condolence, please, for Brian Shul. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for tonight.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
I want to mention, I want to thank Supervisor Flores for coming out to Sutter Buttes Day just a few weeks ago. It was the largest Sutter Buttes Day in history. It was awesome, the parade was great. The individuals that put that on knocked it out of the park. They, it was phenomenal.
It was a great time.
Boat races, to the parade, to the party in the park, everything was really awesome. And I asked Supervisor Flores, say, hey, you want to come out for a little bit? He ended up stayed all day.
Had a good time riding in your convertible, so good time.
I could add one thing. It's your district, Mike. Thursday night, you have supper with the sheriff at the French Whisk. Yes. And it's at 4:00 to 7:00? 4:30? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd just like to recognize one person real quick, since we're all talking here, right? I want to recognize Officer LaConno, because
Yeah.
I'll tell you, he was at Sutter Buttes Day, too, so him there, very actively involved. And then I saw him afterwards at a presentation by the Live Oak City Council and the Live Oak City Manager for a Chamber of Commerce breakfast. So him and I ate the most incredible burritos together and enjoyed breakfast, but I just really wanted to call you out because, you know, your involvement in the community really shows, and people noticed that, and many came to me, too, and remarked that they see you out there. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to start off by congratulating the city of Marysville on bringing in their baseball team, the Drakes. I actually was there for their exhibition match on Sunday night. Tomorrow's going to be their first
Thursday night.
Sorry, Thursday night's going to be their first game, but very excited, excited for the city of Marysville and for our community. We are one community. I think we should get out and support the new team. Maybe we could, you know, send a letter over inviting the Drakes over and maybe do a presentation. There's some young men on that team that are still looking for the host families to take them in. If someone would like to, you know, be willing to consider that, I think it'd be a great opportunity. This weekend, I will be attending on Sunday, the 27th Annual Punjabi American Festival that's going to be held at the UBSutter Fairgrounds. Everybody is welcome and encouraged to come out and enjoy and some culture and festivities there. Monday, I will be joining the folks at Calvary Temple, Mr., the CEO, Seoli, and their family, and they do such an amazing, amazing job. The Grateful Nations is so moving. I've been there the last couple of years, and I really look forward, I look forward to that program on Monday. And to everybody, just wish you all a happy Memorial Day weekend, and be safe and enjoy. God bless you all.
Sorry, I forgot to mention one thing. Saturday, we're putting flags at the cemetery for Memorial Day, so at 9:00 in the morning at Sutter Cemetery, and then Monday at 9:00 a.m., there'll be a memorial there for Memorial Day.
Through the Chair. Just kidding.
I am looking for a motion to
Oh, yeah? Motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you for coming. Good night. Meeting adjourned.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.